The study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:00 PM, Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, virtually, in room 137 of the Edison Building, with colleagues participating electronically in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.21 until further notice. Members of the public are currently not permitted to attend these meetings physically due to COVID-19 pandemic recommendations. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/isd535, where the livestream video may be found. The Board acknowledges that our PSites are situated on ancestral lands of the Dakota people. We acknowledge and honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members and Superintendent Michael Munoz, a non-voting ex-official member. Also present is Assistant School Board Clerk, Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson.
Here.
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Thank you. Chair Marvin.
Here.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Treasure Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda, 2.01. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda to add an information item, 8.04 Superintendent's Search Process. Do I have a second?
Second, Workman.
All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda will answer as Ms. Severson calls the roll.
Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
Treasure Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And may I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second, Amundson.
Nathan moves, and Amundson seconds. Ms. Severson, will you call the roll?
Absolutely. Thank you. Clerk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Chair, Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
Treasure Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
7.01 Pre-Referendum Survey. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I would turn this over to John Carlson, Executive Director, Business and Finance. John?
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Munoz, Chair Marvin, members of the School Board. Tonight, we are here in study session format with a guest that we've invited to talk to you about a potential referendum survey. Really, what I wanted to make very clear is that the administration is not, at this time, recommending that we do anything other than learn about the steps should we desire to go down that path. So, just so that everyone's aware, this is purely study and trying to learn what the steps are in case we desire to go out for a referendum in the future. So, Sue, if you're there, you're going to take it away and lead this conversation, and then we're going to have some time for some questions later, too.
Very good. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be back with you, and hard to believe that it's been a couple of years since I've been in front of you. It feels like yesterday. So, I'm just verifying that you can see my PowerPoint is what you're looking at on the screen. That's what I'm going to go through and talk a bit about, the community survey process. Some of you will recall that process when we did the bond referendum, and I'll spend some time explaining really the difference between that bond and the levy process when we're using a community survey.
Sue?
Yep.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Your screen is flashing, I think, for multiple people here. I thought maybe it was just me at first, so maybe unshare and try sharing again and see what happens.
It was like fireworks. Let's see.
That looks stable to me, if anyone else can confirm.
It looks good.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Sue.
That's okay. Now, I got to see if I can make my screen move forward. We'll see if I can get that to work. Hmm. Now, I'm having issues on my end. Well, that's weird. I'm going to email the presentation to you, maybe, John, and then we'll see if I can...
Sure.
It was working before. Oh, here we go. Let's just hold still. Here we go. All right. Never a dull moment, friends. So, those of you who don't remember me and the work that we did together, our mission hasn't changed, and we've been doing this work in schools across the country and in the Midwest since 2002, with a mission really to help educational leaders like yourselves gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. And as you're familiar with, we do that most often in the form of surveys. So, why do we use a survey? It's an opportunity for us to put information together out to all members of your community so that we can gather information on referendum timing, on your community's tax tolerance. In this case, it would be on educational priorities and financial priorities, and also to gather just some overall sense of people's satisfaction with the school district. We certainly know that there's a correlation between if people are happy with the work that the school district is doing, the likelihood that they will open their wallets and their checkbooks and say, "I'm willing to accept an increase in taxes." So, that community engagement process that we utilize this survey for is really twofold, and you likely remember this from last time. Our goal is to help people understand the plan and the needs of the district, and then help to have a voice in what that looks like. And now, in this case, while it's not about building schools and remodeling schools, but really saying, "Okay, how much money do we want our school district to have, and then how do we allocate those funds?" So, that process of getting to that end survey that lands in mailboxes is really that design and that strategy development work that's done before the survey lands, and that's about really defining your talking points. And we spent a lot of time together before that last survey, really saying, "Okay, here's what our needs are. How do we make this story..." I always say, "simple enough so that my grandma understands it, okay? We want it to be in layperson's terms and so that we truly understand what those needs are and where the district is at." So, we want to make sure we can educate all members of our community, and then use that tool to gather data as far as where people are at in their willingness to support a potential referendum. So, we mail likely an eight-page paper survey to every household within your district. We've built that survey within a proprietary website that we have, as well as the fact that people can return a paper survey with our business reply envelope. So, again, think of an eight-page, a little thin Sports Illustrated magazine, if you will, that lands, it folds center and mails flat. The cover letter is a setup of where the district is at. So, it's going to look a little different this time, but it's going to talk about the fact that, you know, when we get ready to go to referendum, that you're saying, "We're proud of the work that we're doing in our schools," but the reality is, we've got some financial challenges. So, I'm just showing some examples here. This was Chatfield, Minnesota, your neighbor, when they were looking to go to referendum. They talked about the fact in their opening letter that they'd already done some looking under every rock and, you know, turning things over and looking at reductions that they could make, and identifying what that shortfall would be. Similarly, in the St. Francis schools, they were identifying that they would have a $1.2 million budget shortfall in 2021, as we looked to go out to survey there. So, again, no two surveys ever look alike, but we create your story and really, here's where we're at, with then an invitation to folks to learn more by going through that survey process. So, again, we've built that proprietary website, and we included that one-time-use 16-digit alphanumeric access code that falls under the website, allowing folks to take the survey once and only once, or they can take it by paper and mail it back to us. Like last time, our survey can toggle in multiple languages. We also provided you with translated copies in multiple languages to make sure that all members of your community had the opportunity to weigh in. So, the magic that happens, so that allows us to tell you with a high degree of predictability, really, what would pass at the polls and where your community is at, is when we ask respondents to give us some information about themselves. So, we ask them their age, we want to make sure their primary residence is within your school district, so this is a not-too-far neighbor of yours in Cannon Falls. We want to know if they're employees of the district, if they've got children attending school in your district, and then the municipality that they reside in. So, why do we ask these questions? We're able to correlate this data with what we know about voting habits, and so we can slice and dice the data in all kinds of different ways. But again, our goal is to tell you, here's really the priorities of your community, and should you consider going to election, here's where your tax tolerance and project priorities lie from your citizens. So, remember I said that survey has two purposes. One is to educate, the other is to gather data. So, in your case, we really want to make sure that your citizens understand the difference between that operating levy and the facility bond. Some are going to say, "Didn't we just do this? Didn't you just ask us for money?" And we'd say, "Yep, indeed, we did, but that bond is used for buildings, levies are used for learning and taking care of those day-to-day expenses." So, we want to make sure people understand that, okay? So, this is some copy that we used in the St. Francis School District, where they, too, had just had a successful bond referendum, and we wanted to make sure that people understood that those were two separate types of referenda. Then, we want to let folks know, again, we're going to look at your situation. We'll work with John and his team and say, "All right, where is the district at financially? Have they made any reductions to date? What have those looked like? Have you tightened up your belt?" So, again, simple terms. We want to be able to let people know that before we're knocking on the door, asking for money, we've done some other things to try and reduce expenses. So, again, all customized to you, but I'm just sharing with you some copy we've used in other Minnesota districts. This is a slide you saw from your Ellers team a few weeks ago, but again, we want to educate folks on the fact that that state funding formula hasn't kept up with inflation, and that's a piece of the challenge, okay? So, we'll likely simplify this graph for your citizens, and it would include something like this in the survey, as well as letting them take a look at, "Where are you at compared to your neighbors?" So, again, that's all part of that strategy of building your story, of educating people on where the Rochester schools are at as far as their operating funding. After we move through that, oftentimes, we'll talk about, "Here's what our budget shortfall looks like." And then, we know that if there's only so much money available to us, and we've got a shortfall, we're either going to need more money from our citizens to support our schools, or we're going to have to make some tough decisions. So, there's a variety of ways that we can gather that information. Again, I'm just showing you some examples, but sometimes, we'll walk folks through an exercise where we'll say, "Okay, we don't endorse any of these, but if we need to reduce expenses, do you want us to look at adjusting class sizes? Do you want us to consider elective course changes, and perhaps not offering all of our electives? Do you want us to look at adjusting transportation or co-curriculars, or reducing how we're, you know, replacing technology or using technology in our schools?" So, again, that all gets customized, but we need some way for citizens to provide some input on, "Are there things that they're saying, 'No, I think there's more tightening or adjusting' that the school districts could do?" In other cases, instead of using a table format, we might build things out. One of the things John and I talked briefly about is, is there potentially a technology referendum? Is that something you explore? And so, do we look at two options or one, and do we talk about what the technology needs are, and perhaps what those costs associated with technology would be? Again, this was a small district in Minnesota, so their needs were significantly less than what yours would be. And then, the magic, really, it all comes down to one thing, right? It always comes down to money, just like it did with your bond referendum, but we let folks really understand, "Okay, here's how much we need for this many years, and then here's what it means to you based on the value of your property or the properties that you own." And so, sometimes, we just put forth one amount and say, "Here's really what we need. Are you with us or not?" And in other cases, similar again to when we ask those multiple bond questions with your bond project, we would perhaps present various levy amounts and say, "Okay, you know, we could ask for this much more per student, and it would mean we'd have to make some cuts, or we could ask for more." So, again, it lets people weigh in and reflect on what they can afford and what they value based on the information that they have learned in the survey. And then, similar to last time, when I'm all done with the survey, after it's open and we've collected the data, I appear and walk you through really what your citizens are saying and what they think they could support. And so, sometimes, that looks like a resounding, "Not yet, not now." Other times, it's, you've got great support, or we need to, we need to look at, you know, a smaller ask, and likely, the district would need to make some cuts. So, that process and my involvement or our involvement, when you get ready to go to referendum, really will look very similar to what it did last time, but again, the conversation is just different. We're not talking about buildings this time, we're talking about operational funding. So, we'd be involved in some of those planning conversations, then that strategy and data gathering stage, and then that designing of the survey and gathering your feedback on, once we've got that story just right. And then, that survey goes out for about three weeks, when we're administering the survey and helping with the messaging, and then finally, that data analysis piece, where we look at the data, we slice and dice it in multiple ways, and then we work with you on, "Here's what the data looks like," and then really help you, post-survey, decide on those next steps. So, with that, I will take a breath, ask John if I missed anything that he wants to add, or I'll open it up to questions from the group.
I would just say, I probably did a poor job of introducing you and saying, "Why did we have you here in the first place?" And it really was because when we last had a study session around January 12th, we were just talking about the potential for a significant budget shortfall in the fall of 2022. So, that's the year when we open up new schools, and so, it's not necessarily immediately for this coming fall, as we work on setting our budget, but it's the year after that. And so, then, we had conversation around, "Well, if we're going to go and ask for money, when would you do that?" And so, that's why we said, "Let's have Sue come and talk with us about the process."
Thank you, Sue, and Mr. Carlson. And absolutely better to be proactive so that we know going forward, in the event we need to do a referendum, we'll know what we're looking at. At this point, do you have any questions for either Mr. Carlson or Sue? And I will apologize in advance. If I don't see your hand, it's not because I'm avoiding you, it's just I can't see all the hands. I think, Ms. Nathan, you have the first question, and then Ms. Amundson.
Thank you, Chair Marvin. Hello, Sue. I was wondering on the information about the cost-saving options, I noticed that, you know, it described, you know, what they might be. Do you ever include dollar amounts in those cost-saving options to give people a sense of the scope? For example, if this reduction was made, how much of our budget deficit it would make up, or does that complicate things?
We certainly can, and so, sometimes, we'll do that in that good, better, best-of-the-tax-tolerance page as well. So, we might say, you know, if we're going to only ask for this much in the levy, that might mean we have to reduce X number of positions. And other times, we have included that in that cost savings piece. So, again, that's a lot of that legwork that happens pre-survey, and that could take many months as you kind of go through your, "What could reductions look like?" But certainly, I think that's helpful for people to have an understanding of what we're talking about, because certainly, oftentimes, we'll have increased athletic fees, and that's, you know, just such a small dollar amount that people need to really understand. When we're talking about a significant budget deficit, likely, we're talking about staffing and things that truly impact kids, as where we're going to need to look to recoup most of those dollars should a levy not be successful. So, certainly, that would be on the table. What we don't want to do is have it start to look like, "This position's going to be cut," or "That position," and suddenly, we have Mrs. Jones out advocating for, "Save my job," right? But yet, a bit more broad as far as, in general, various areas that would need to be reduced.
And Ms. Amundson.
So, I really appreciate the survey that we had done before the building referendum, because I think that the results that we saw from the survey, you know, gave us the encouragement, and it really did turn out to be right on. The survey reflected a level of community support that we then saw in the results of the election, the referendum question. So, I firmly believe in the value of having a survey process like this early on in the process. In my experience with past referendum efforts, I was, I have in my records, a survey that was done quite some time ago that took it to another level, and I think it's a really good process for the School Board to go through anyway, to kind of do sort of a testing of the waters, not just when we're asking for more money, but just finding out how the community is feeling about the school district and what their priorities are. So, priorities both, you know, if we have to cut, these are things that we might cut, and how does that make you feel about supporting or opposing the referendum? So, going through the kinds of things that you mentioned, you know, is it athletic fees? Is it, you know, other things? If we were to look at being able to enhance, and I don't know if that's even possible with a $13 million reduction, if that's what we're looking at, if we'd even be able to ask them for more money, but if that were feasible, to be able to move into enhancements, that kind of list as well, you know? If you knew that voting yes on this would enable us to do two-tier busing and have kids, you know, all starting at a better time, or if you knew we'd be able to add a world language at a younger age, or music at a younger age, or whatever those types of initiatives we're interested in, that kind of questioning would be useful to us as well. But I also think for our communication efforts, should we choose to do a referendum question, knowing which points were the most convincing, the most, that held the most weight with our community? So, questions along the lines of, "If you knew that we'd have to cut X number, you know, it would be likely that the X number of jobs could be cut. If the referendum doesn't pass, does that influence your thinking? If you understood the graph that was shown about the legislature not keeping up with the rate of inflation and the amount of money that they give to districts, and now districts need to pass more referendums to make up the difference, does that influence your thinking?" So, not just a tax tolerance. Tax tolerance is, you know, critically important, but an extra layer of questioning that gets to the psychology of the messaging, so to speak, so that we know what resonates with our community members the most. And not only does that help us to communicate the importance of a referendum effort, then it will also inform us, you know, should things not be as successful, and help us as a School Board prioritize as well. And I know that could happen after the referendum in terms of looking at budget cuts, but giving the community a chance to really understand what saying no to a referendum might mean, so that they are very well-informed as to the potential outcomes. But that also helps us at the same time in focusing on the potential outcomes that are the most meaningful to the community, if that makes sense. It's a service to the community to help us make sure that they understand the things that are the most important to them that will be affected. Sorry, that was long-winded, but it was a book chapter. So, I guess the question that's really relevant to this is, the eight-page format that your examples and what we had for the building referendum, is there room to expand past an eight-page format and/or maybe do more of a targeted sampling if not, if that would be unwieldy to give everybody a long survey? Could we give everybody a short survey and then a sampling, a longer survey, for instance?
Great question. So, we could work on some different options for you that I could let you explore. We've got some options for, we've done in some districts where we've asked, you know, "What is your prioritization on funding and spending?" So, in some cases, it would be enhancing mental health services, or what different things that could be beyond what you're saying are those deficits. So, that could be the case. What I would probably do is, when we begin our work together, I would show you lots of different things, and then as we move through that survey process, we might say, "Okay, this is too much for everyone, so do we want to do that targeted survey with another random sampling that would kind of go, do a deeper dive?" We've done both options, so certainly, that would be possible, but there may be some ways to get you everything you want to all of the people.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow.
Thank you. Sue, I have a question regarding what I would term, "Pre-survey work or challenges," and it evolves around... And it evolves around if or when there may be a community tension and/or a community voice that may be in opposition to the board and/or district. Are there some things which should occur prior to the issuance of a survey to potentially ensure the success of the survey? I mean, survey results will be survey results. But obviously, we're looking for a positive outcome, you know, versus simply, you know, a outcome that would not necessarily result in the results we're looking for. So I guess to be clear, if I wasn't, when there are existing challenges, is there pre-work that occurs to potentially even get a read on community tolerance or willingness prior to a full-blown survey being released?
Great question. So I would say, think back to the work with the facility projects and the fact that you had a citizens' group or some of those meetings, those focus groups, if you will. I can picture the room full. That seems so foreign to us in the last 12 months, right? Large groups of people in one space. But you were able to kind of do a litmus test with citizens and say, what do you think of this? What about that? And what did that do? That also allowed for some communication out in some publicity about the fact that the district is poking around and considering these options. So some of that then will bubble up, some of those thoughts, and we can work through some of that. So I would anticipate that pre-survey, as we go through that planning process, that it's likely that you will have some sort of citizens' group or some meetings that would allow us to explore different options as we then create the story for the survey. And so that, and again, I think that allows a chance for, if you've got some naysayers out there, some people that feel strongly or passionately about particular issues going on, that they can articulate that at that point. And then if there's pieces that we can address or include in the survey, it'll allow us to have a better understanding of that.
Thank you.
Other questions, board members? Ms. Nathan.
So Sue, to build on Director Barlow's questions, that pre-survey work and public engagement compared to the timeline of the survey, can you give us a week, month estimate of just how that would work and how much time we should be thinking of in our head of doing the most comprehensive, both communication and strategizing job?
Yep, great question. So I always say, begin with the end in mind. And so you did a lot of work on that bond before you even knew of me, and then I appeared, right? So in this case, you perhaps be looking at, you know, in November of '21 or in November of '22, likely, is maybe where you're going to lean. And knowing that we don't want to go out too soon with having conversation because if the story gets too drawn out, people lose interest. You know, the story just gets lost in other things going on. So if you think November of whatever year you go, you need to certify that question in August. So likely, that means that as a board, you're making a decision in June at the latest July. So we're surveying in May, giving you results end of May, early June. So that work then would be taking place in the spring. So, you know, March, April with a survey in May. So, or even a bit sooner, December through April, where those meetings would start to happen. So again, you know, likely, and I'm not telling you what you're doing, but if you're looking at November of '22, then you're really saying, perhaps right after the first of the year, you're starting to have those conversations, pulling together some groups. Likely, the work that John and his team are doing would be happening in the fall of '21, so that then your Eller's team and that data as far as decisions and kind of some high, you know, high-level processes for your citizens to understand would happen really between probably January and April.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you could see me and hear me, hear me for sure. So this question is probably more from Mr. Carlson. At what date would we have to pass a referendum in order to meet the projected shortfall? Because I know that when we pass something that it's not readily available, there's a gap there. And if you could address that again, I would appreciate it.
Yep. So it's a little bit tricky right now because we've got this addition of federal funding through the CARES Act that we can probably use to get through for next year for sure and possibly even have a little bit left over for that fall of '22, '23 school year. But if we were, if that wasn't in play, we would have been asking probably for a referendum for fall of '21, so people would pay their property taxes in '22, and we'd be able to start spending that money for the fall of '22. Again, there's a lot of moving parts with the federal funding now kind of coming into play. And so maybe we rethink that and say, maybe delay a year and see what we can do to trim the budget, use federal funds, and get through the '22, '23 school year before, you know, when the shortfall really will be, maybe the fall of '23 now.
May I ask a follow-up question, Chair Marvin? So the Fed, what's the intent with the federal fund? I am assuming it's not really to, is it to cover the budget shortfall that we've had from our COVID expenses? Or could you address that a little bit more?
Sure. Actually, we were just talking about that today, a cabinet that we need to have some further internal discussions before that, on that, before we have a plan to maybe bring public. But yes, the money is pretty flexible, and then it could be used for COVID costs. It could be used for shortfalls in the budget. It could be used to even add things that we need, like maybe additional summer programming or extra staff in the next year or two, so.
So is it safe to say that we don't really, I mean, we don't really know what kinds of restrictions there might be from the federal government on this? But it's, right now, it's looking fairly flexible, but we haven't got that quite nailed down yet. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that is pretty accurate, actually. On Friday, we got some misinformation that's been corrected now as of today. And so, but there's still more, more learning that needs to come from the Department of Education on how we can use that funding. But we do believe it's pretty flexible, that that's what the federal government wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Nathan, is that a residual hand, or do you have another question?
I have another question.
All right.
So first for Mr. Carlson. So even if we were able to stretch the money through the 2022, '23 school year, we're still looking in the out years at multimillion-dollar budget cuts. So either revenue reductions or expenditure reductions or revenue enhancements are coming on the horizon at some point.
Yes, and that's a good point. That was going to happen no matter what. Like, we would be having this discussion with or without COVID, with or without any opening new schools. When we ran the last referendum in fall of 2015, we said, we'll be good for sure for five school years. Well, guess what? Those five years have passed, and we've hit the projection where we were going to be short. You know, five years ago, we said we were going to be short, so.
So, and then the question for Sue is, in terms of these community engagement work before we do a survey, is, in those groups, is that where you have a conversation about what some of the priorities might be in terms of expenditure reductions to kind of test some of them out? Or is it more of an educational conversation?
I would say it's a bit of both. Making sure, you know, if we can have some key citizens there that can really understand the district's finances, they can share, many times, like your Eller's team would come in and facilitate one of those meetings. And people might say, well, I've heard this, or this is what people think. And so we need to know what's out there, what people don't understand, so that we can, again, clearly articulate where the district is at, so people understand it. And then exactly what you're saying, you know, letting people do some brainstorming and, you know, letting citizens have a voice in what are some options or what are some thoughts they have for reductions? Or where do they see some priorities? Again, they're not leading the, you know, making the decisions, but perhaps just providing some thought and having a voice and helping to frame that story for us as we kind of work through this process.
Any other questions? I see.
Yeah, one more.
All right.
Just to know, going forward, right, as to next steps? And I guess this is a question for Chair Marvin or Mr. Carlson. You know, this was great information. It always is when we hear from Sue. Do we have a sort of an anticipated plan as to, since we can't make a decision tonight, you know, what's our timeframe or thoughts about how we're going to move forward to, you know, bringing this to an action item?
Well, I know that Mr. Carlson has a really good answer for this, because he always does. And I know one of the challenges is like so many other issues right now. We don't know exactly what we're in for. We don't know exactly how much funding will come, what it can be used for. So it's difficult to lay down a proof-positive plan going forward. But I'm guessing that Mr. Carlson could give us a best guess. And I enjoy always putting you on the spot, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, this one's definitely putting on the spot. As I stated when we started, we, as administration, haven't come up with a recommendation one way or the other on what we would like to guide or suggest. So I think, I think you need to give us a little bit of direction, whether there's some consensus, should we keep talking about it for the fall of '21? Should we pump the brakes and say, let's talk about this after we get some of these other bigger projects dealt with? I guess that's the direction I'd be looking for.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if Ms. Workman has the answer for that. She does. All right, Ms. Workman.
No, no, no. I don't have the answer for that. I thought you were going to ask me if that was a new hand or a stray hand. So I was nodding my head, but it is indeed a new hand. In terms of us having to make a decision for this fall, the November 2021, I know we have to have our information into the state sometime in August. But practically speaking, Mr. Carlson, at what point do we have to fish or cut bait?
Based on what I'm hearing from Sue, there wouldn't be too much time to delay here in deciding we should at least run a survey to see what people are thinking. Yeah, but it sounds like that's more in the next month or two kind of timeframe to decide that.
That's kind of what I figured, but I just wanted confirmation on that from you, so, thank you.
Ms. Amundson.
I would be interested in at least pursuing the survey to get a feel of where people are. I think the more in touch we are with current sentiment, the better our decisions will be all around. I also think that, as we know, referendums face more of an uphill climb in the even years because of the other offices on the ballot. I also think that if we delay until the very last chance at a referendum, and then we fail to pass it, then we don't have a chance to go back and adjust and come back for another shot. We just, we have to cut. And then, as we all have heard, things that get cut rarely come back. So Rochester has had a history of having failed referendums and then having to make some adjustments and come back with a different approach. So I would be more comfortable if we ran the survey now and if it looked like our community was leaning towards being in favor of enhancements, not enhancements to our budget, but enhancements to our funding sources. The other advantage would be that the earlier we can adjust the budget, whichever direction we need to, the less severe the cuts may have to be. And I guess where I'm going at is, if we get a tax tolerance survey that says we'll give you some, but it's not going to address the entire shortfall, then that gives us a little bit more time to react and adjust and, you know, make some cuts earlier that would have an extra year of benefit that we could see. So all that is to say, I would be in favor of pursuing the survey immediately. And then what we do with that information afterwards depends on how it goes.
Ms. Workman. No, Ms. Nathan.
And to build on what Director Amundson said, I think John can confirm that topics we might ask about and the feedback we might be asking for from the community in a survey that we did in 2021 probably wouldn't change much if we waited to do a survey later because our budget is our budget and our expenditure areas are our expenditure areas. So if we're talking about reductions this year, it's probably going to be the same list. So knowing sooner rather than later how our community feels about it gives us better information for a longer period of time. So I would also be in favor of doing one sooner rather than later, not committing, obviously, to anything about a referendum yet.
Mr. Barlow.
I agree with that as well. I guess the only caveat I would suggest or offer would be climate, community climate. While the questions and/or issues may not change year to year, the climate of the community perhaps does. And so, Sue, if I may, just circle back around. Your experience regarding community climate and its impact or effect upon the success or non-success, can you briefly speak to that, please?
Certainly. So, you know, one thought is just, like I had said earlier, beginning with the end in mind, when you use the survey as kind of that pre-referendum tool, not going out, not surveying too soon for the fact that the message gets lost. I think the other thing, we're just in very unique times right now. Given the pandemic and the economy, you know, if November '22 is when we may go, people will have a better handle, perhaps, on what the economy means to them personally next spring than they will this spring. That doesn't mean we can't survey now, it's just things to be thoughtful of. If you're, you know, you've got some other changes happening within the district, and like you talked about, just that community sentiment. I also think to just be sensitive to, it just pushes us a little further from the ask for the facility projects. So again, things to just So again, things to just be thoughtful of. There's also the opportunity though, on the other side, to perhaps allow people in some tool with the survey to air some grievances, if you will. So if there are some culture, climate issues that citizens have, that they can get it off their chest and, and kind of share where they're at, that that may be helpful as well. So you have a couple of options. One, as I'm listening to people talk is sometimes we'll do more of a strategic planning survey first. That's more of a help us set some priorities and initiative. What, where should we be focusing our efforts? That could be a survey that isn't mailed out or is mailed out just to a, a certain group of people. But we could use an email platform to parents. And so that could give us an, an initial piece. And that could help and then lead into that work of a facility or a community group that would meet in advance of a April of 22 survey. But again, if you want to keep that November 21 on the, on the table, we just, we just have to work much more quickly. So pros and cons certainly to each. We certainly could do both. And we know that, you know, in these times, our survey data has remained predictive. So a lot of referenda were not successful in Minnesota recently. But I'll tell you, the work we did in other states was dead on exactly as the surveys predicted. But the work we did in Minnesota was predictive. So many of those surveys or referenda that didn't pass in Minnesota hadn't worked with us prior to going to the polls.
Thank you. Other questions? It appears that if and when we want to do a survey is a, an issue that we will need to discuss further. Think there are a couple of really good, at least a couple of really good issues there that need some more discussion. And we can put that on an upcoming agenda item for another meeting. Any, anything else for Sue or for John? Julie?
Yes. So what is our final date by which we absolutely have to make a decision on the survey? If we were to proceed by November of 2021?
Sue, could you jump in on when you would want us to say we're ready to go and work with you on a survey this spring?
Yeah, I would say time is of the essence. Because, you know, you're a, this is, you're a big district and there's, there's a lot to, a lot of back work that will need to be done. Work that John will, in his team, will need to do. And, you know, the, that back and forth. So I would say you've probably got a couple of weeks before we need to know. But no, I mean, March 1 would be, we'd be tight at that point. We could certainly roll up our sleeves and get to work. But again, you know, just being thoughtful of, ideally, you'd want to have that survey wrapped up probably by Memorial Day so that you're not surveying into the summer. We've certainly done it, just less ideal.
So would that, would that date be the same if you were doing the survey to get temperature for what people value more with their prior educational priorities are? Rather than what their fiscal tolerance is?
Yeah, I think that we, you know, then if you let me know mid-March, because I've got some ideas on things I could show you and we could pull together. We don't have to deal likely with as much of, as large of a printing and mailing process. And that time that takes a couple of weeks. So that adds, you know, additional time in there that we have to front load before the survey could deploy. So, you know, in that sense, we, that could almost be almost 100% online, that survey. So if we did that work, we could do that in May. But we could certainly get going on that later in March.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Workman.
Yes, I have one more from Mr. Carlson. I'm not sure how to phrase this. How much more stress would this put on your department and the cabinet? Because I know we have a lot of issues on our collective plate that we're going to have to be addressing over the next few months. I, I just don't want everybody, you know, having a heart attack and dropping dead on the spot. That would be not worth it. So if, if you could give us some honest appraisal of, of, of your capabilities that's not going to involve 24/7 for, for you guys?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that it's all finance related. Where, where I'm struggling just a little bit is I, I don't make budget cuts in a vacuum. So I rely on my colleagues, my supervisor, the superintendent, the board to kind of give direction on those. We can come up with how much would be saved. But we would never want to just come to you and say, this is what we've decided to cut. That won't go over well.
No, I, I, I agree. I mean, I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people need to be involved.
Not just for you, but for, for your, for your entire team.
Yep, yep. So a lot of people, I think, beyond finance need to be involved in thinking through, okay, if we are going to cut the budget drastically to bring expenses in line with revenues in the fall of, say, 22, you know, a lot of discussions have to happen really quick here to figure out what those things would be.
Well, and that, I guess that's one of the reasons why I'm thinking that if we do a survey just to ask our community, what's really important to you for the education of your child? What do you value most? That matters. And I'm guessing that that won't change very much based on the financial climate or people's employment. But I think that's really important information to what, for us to have in the event that we have to make cuts. And then perhaps we could do that, another survey a little bit after that in terms of if we decide we want to do a referendum, what would be their, again, their tolerance in terms of how much we could ask for? Any last questions? All right, John and Sue, thank you so much for your time, for your expertise. We really, we really appreciate you. And you have not seen the end of us. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sue, for joining us tonight.
You bet. Thanks for having me.
We have two information items. 8.01, February 16th, 2021, and 5:30 will be the next regular school board meeting. And February 23rd, 2021, at 5:00 PM will be a school board retreat where the school board will get its self-evaluation results and make some plans for the future. At this point, there's another information item. 8.04, the superintendent search process. Whether we decide to try to run a referendum or not, we know that we are, we have to have a search for a new superintendent. Superintendent Munoz will end his tenure with us the end of June. And there are two questions that we need to answer quickly because he will be gone in less than five months. We cannot vote at tonight's meeting, but I, we just want to get the information out there so that we can be thinking about these things and be ready to move them in quickly. Two of the decisions we're going to have to make. First is, do we want to look starting very soon for an interim superintendent? This would be someone, and we have to have someone with a superintendent's license, who would serve as a superintendent for our district, short term, a year or less. This would be possibly someone who is a recently retired superintendent, probably someone who has served in Minnesota before. So was familiar with Minnesota education law and finance law. Could be broader than that. But generally speaking, interims are people who are familiar with the state at least. Or do we want to right now begin conducting a search for a, a full-on search for a more permanent superintendent? Here are the things I think that we need to, oh, that's the first thing. So do we want an interim search or a, a regular full-term, not full-term, but more permanent superintendent search? And then the second thing is, do we want to try to conduct the search ourselves as a board? As a district? Or do we want to contract with a superintendent search firm? Now, Ms. Workman's going to talk to you in just a minute. But we have, as the only board member who has been through a superintendent search before and as the board's treasurer, she has gotten some information about what's involved. I've had a conversation with the Minnesota State School, School Board Association. And what's involved, whether it's an interim search or a longer-term superintendent search, typically there is a planning meeting that the school board has to go through to develop a timeline, search criteria. Typically, we would connect with the community members through a survey. We would have school, district staff listening posts. And I think more now than ever, we really, really put a premium, I think at least, on hearing what our community values. Again, what's important to them in education and who do they want as a leader for this district? After that, then vacancy would have to be posted, in fact, be posted before that. Then contacting various agencies who know which people are looking for jobs or possibly which people are not looking for jobs, but it'd be quality candidates. We would need to develop application procedures, handle the applicant's calls and correspondence, collect and review their files. We would need to screen the applicant pool. We would have to do preliminary reference checks. We would have to train school board members about how to interview candidates. Certainly, we'd need to conduct a round or two of interviews, prepare a communication piece. So we would communicate with our community as well as with the media. We would need to facilitate school district, district staff question and answer input and forums. We would need to slot then superintendent and support that person and decide how we're going to do that during the first year or more of that person's tenure in office. Typically, that's what's involved in a superintendent search. If we did this for an interim, it would be abbreviated. But again, then we'd be looking for someone who would fill in until we were able to find a, a full-time superintendent. Now, Ms. Workman, you were able to get some information from one firm, organization that you talked with, I believe.
Yes, that's correct. And I also did a little bit of research on my own apart from that. Just to reflect a little bit of when we were in this situation 10 years ago. At that time, the current superintendent was leaving as of January 14th. He had given his notice on December 18th of 2010. So we had to have an interim in place on January 15th. At that time, the board did not consider whether or not we wanted to have an interim for the rest of that school year plus the following year. Because it was, it would have been a, a much longer period of time. Our situation's a little different this time where we know that we would not need an interim superintendent until the 1st of July. Or a permanent superintendent. In my conversations today, I, and I, I, I guess I had this, this thought in my mind, which was confirmed, which is that to start a superintendent search right now, we, a permanent search right now, we could do it, but it puts us under a lot of stress, a lot of tension. Because the superintendents that might be available to us now are maybe not quite necessarily the quality that we would want to see moving forward. That was phrased pretty awkwardly. We'd have a bigger pool of candidates to choose from if we had the interim, had an interim starting July 1st for the entire school year. That would give us the summer, the fall, the late winter to really do a very thorough search for, for a superintendent, which would, I, I've been thinking about this a lot over the last few days. And I've wrestled it between, yes, I want to get somebody on board as quickly as possible versus how much, how much that's actually going to be involved. And once again, I think Mr. Barlow made a remark about the climate of the community. So I'm not sure what the response from the community would be right now for what they might want to see in a permanent superintendent. So like I said, I would be much more inclined to go with an interim superintendent for the 21, 20 school, 22 school year. And that, we can do both at the same time. We can have a superintendent interim search now while we are also been looking forward to hiring a permanent superintendent. Approximately 25% of super interim superintendents actually become permanent superintendents, but it's not so likely. The recommendation also, and this confirmed what I was thinking, was that for an interim superintendent, it would really be beneficial to us to go with someone who is familiar with Minnesota, somebody who's been a superintendent in, in Minnesota. And there are actually retired superintendents out there who like to have this position for a year, knowing that, you know, it's not permanent, but they've got the experience, the knowledge and, and so forth. So I, that was a little bit rambling, but I hope it was somewhat helpful.
And again, we're not going to vote on this tonight. We don't have to come to a decision, but I think it's important for us to be thinking about that. Because one way or the other, whatever we decide, we have to get moving on this quickly. So again, it's interim superintendent and then, and then begin a search for a more permanent superintendent early next fall. Or start right now to find that person who will come here and stay here for several years. And then the next part is, do we want to do this ourselves?
No. I, I, I think, I think that would be absolutely totally crazy to do it ourselves. Like we don't have anything else on our plate anyway. Unless our two new board members have had experience going through hiring a superintendent. Don't believe any of the rest of us, I mean, without a search firm have had that experience. It would be sort of like, you know, you want to build a house and you have no experience in construction or management or anything else. And you decide you're going to do it all yourself and not hire somebody who really knows what they're doing. So, you know, this is a sort of a one-term thing for us. But a search firm does this on a regular basis. They have the experience and the expertise to do that.
Okay, so you've heard two opinions. Again, this is not a vote, but that's just, and I will just tell you anecdotally. We have had a, a school board before who hired a superintendent without using a search firm. He lasted eight months.
Oh, Mr., yes, Mr. Schellinger, I believe it was.
Yes. Missed up. All right, Ms. Amundson, Ms. Nathan, I'm not sure who had her hand up first. So you two fight it out. Melissa, I think you've been called on.
I'll go. I just wanted to say that I can't imagine doing this without a search firm. For all the wonderful reasons that have been pointed out, but also because I remember search firms from past hires talking about how they have a lot of connections that have been made with job seekers, such as someone who had been up for consideration for another job, but maybe, you know, they weren't the final pick for, you know, type of fit, the purpose of a good fit with the culture, whatever it be. And also because I think, oh, so the, the search firm then can contact people who were previous finalists or maybe they had a new job several years ago and they're ready to move up into a larger district or whatever. So they're able to shake the tree a little bit more and get some more apples to fall or some more applicants to apply. Which I think is, is a really good way to find good experienced superintendents for our district. So for, for that reason alone, I think a search firm would be good. But I also would like to see a search firm from beyond just our immediate region so that we can have a very good diverse pool of candidates.
from beyond just our immediate region so that we can have a, a very good diverse pool of candidates from which to select. I think the, the more we open it up, the, the more rich diversity we get in our candidate pool. So for the, the search firm, absolutely. For the question about interim versus moving quickly into the search process, I think we need to do this well. And I don't think we can do it well if we're rushed. So I would come down firmly on the side of interim for now. And then a, a very well thought out thorough search process.
Thank you. Ms. Nathan, and then Mr. Barlow.
So quickly, yes, I'm in favor of having a search firm. I'm also in favor of an interim and then a full search for a longer-term superintendent. Looking at Duluth and Austin, who are two of the ones that have completed them recently, their search process from hiring a search firm through the signing of the contract were, were six and seven months respectively. And they had extensive community engagement processes to get a sense of what the community was looking for. And I, my number one priority is not shorting our community on having the opportunity to provide feedback into those characteristics that the search firm will then take to match against the candidates that are out there to bring us the best finalists for us to consider. So yes, on the search firm, yes, on the interim. And then one of the things that I think I heard you say, Chair Marvin, which was a little intriguing was that even for the interim superintendent, if we were to engage our community in a conversation even about the characteristics that the interim superintendent should have and not just be, you know, who's available in the pool, but whoever's helping us identify an interim superintendent, figure out a way to, to get that community engagement even for that hire, even though it's on a shorter timeframe.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I too am fully supportive of a search firm as well as the idea of a interim. And that's the input I'd like to provide.
Good enough. Okay. We will, I think, have more, we have a good direction about where to go. And I, I think that we can, we can get started with the process without spending any money, but we can do some outreach at this point. And then at our February 16th meeting, we can have a vote about which direction we want. We will not at that time, if we do vote to use a search firm, we will not name the search firm, but certainly we can, I think, and I don't know if Mr. Carlson is still there, we can put out requests for proposals, RFPs, for what the cost would be and what the service would be for if they were going to look for an interim and if they were going to look for a, I don't want to say firm, permanent superintendent, because we don't expect someone to be here for 200 years. Is, Mr. Carlson, is that correct?
Yes, we could easily do an RFP so that everyone interested could respond. They could give their services and then their pricing for those services. And we could write it so that we get consistent answers, hopefully.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to follow the lead of my other colleagues and support both the interim and the search firm.
Good. Thank you. It sounds like we're agreeing on this. Amazing. Mr. Barlow, your hand is still up. I don't know if you're cheering or if you have another question. And either way, we'll take it.
My hand was just by a mistake, but it is exciting that we are in agreement.
Yes, it is. All right. Is there anything else? Again, we'll get this on, on the agenda for our next meeting, February 16th at 5:30. And unless there are any objections, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:15 PM.